All right, I'll call the November 5th, 2024 meeting of the West Richland City Council to order at 6:00 PM. And before we get started, I'll ask Stephanie to read the hybrid ground rules and then call the roll, please.
Tonight's meeting will be held in person with a virtual meeting component. If you are participating virtually, please make sure the name shown at the bottom of your video view is the name you would like the mayor to use. You can change this by right-clicking on your video view and selecting rename. Audience members present in the council chambers will be called upon first during public comment periods. Those participating virtually should raise your hand if you wish to speak. To virtually raise your hand, click on Participants and then click on Raise Hand. If you are participating by phone only, press asterisk nine to raise your hand. Please limit all comments to three minutes. All right, roll call. Brent Gary?
Here.
Richard Bloom?
Here.
Fred Brink?
Here, attending remotely.
David Fettow?
Here.
May Hates?
Here.
Kate Moran? John Smart?
Here.
Ben Stoker?
Here.
Thank you, Stephanie. And tonight, we have members of the Girl Scouts that are going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening. So ladies, if you would, please come up to the podium and lead us in the pledge, please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united as one, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, dear. And I'll give you a couple of seconds if you'd like.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. My name is Brian Newberry. I'm the CEO of Girl Scouts Eastern Washington, Northern Idaho. I house myself up in Spokane, but we're in, we're all over Eastern Washington and Northern Idaho. Mayor, thank you very much. I just want to apologize to the city of West Richland. I didn't realize that, that you were the first city and that we have not come and celebrated the Day of Girl ever. And finally, this council member says, what's going on? West Richland needs to be on the map. And so you are on the map this year. I deeply apologize. Twelve years ago, United Nations recognized the Day of the Girl as a day to recognize this Girl Scout and say, your voice matters and we want to celebrate it. And this council is doing that. You are at the last council that we've done this at. We've done it at fifteen different city councils. I did it at Moscow, Idaho last night. We also did it in Yakima yesterday as well. You are the last council, but you are the most important. Thank you for giving time to this Girl Scout, to give her the confidence to come up here and understand that she matters. Thank you for what you do for our cities. I gave you a mayor coin because public service matters. I didn't realize this would be election night when I scheduled this. We all didn't realize that, but we realized it's going to be out years and years before we figure this one out. But we did bring cookies for you. We celebrate your leadership. Guess what? Not only does this council been growing five out of the last six years, they're one of the top five Girl Scout councils in America in cookie selling. And we were able to maintain prices at $5 next year. We haven't raised prices since 2016. Your council's best in America, and it's because we have community leaders like you all. God bless you all. God bless America. Thank you very much.
Thank you, much appreciated. And I do have to admit that probably the biggest cookie consumer and the buyer is our Public Works Director, Roscoe Slade. He has boxes of them underneath his desk. So at any time of the year that we all get hungry and get the munchies, we just go hit Roscoe's office up and he's got us hooked up. And then I also get sent from the Girl Scouts, a little I sold to a VIP, and I've shared them with Roscoe and myself, and we always hunt, hunt down our girls and make sure that you've got one for your vests also. So when it comes time for cookie sales again, come see that guy right over there and, and he will, he will take care of you very well. So thank you again for everything that you do and, and still in the leadership and these young ladies. And again, we always save the best for West as always the best for last, right?
Thank you for teaching me. And you have the Best Veterans Parade as well. Our Girl Scouts are always there. As a veteran of 23 years, I salute you all.
Thank you for your service as well. All righty. Counsel, the agenda is before you. Do you have any changes for the agenda this evening?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
A motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, like, sign. Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. And Stephanie, make note that Kate is here this evening. And she came in just time for cookies. We've already had our presentation for this evening, apparently, even though we didn't have one. That brings us to our consent agenda this evening, which includes the, approve the minutes of the regular meeting October 15th. Resolution 6324 authorizing the mayor to execute an interlocal agreement regarding water system modeling for the Horn Rapids Water Intertie with the City of Richland. Resolution 6424 authorizing the mayor to execute reimbursement agreement with Frank Teigs LLC. Is there anyone from the audience who'd like to speak to our consent agenda this evening? I see no one in house, and I do not see anybody virtually this evening. Stephanie, do you?
We do not have any virtual attendees tonight.
Very good, thank you. Let me know if you do see anybody pop in there and we'll ask for them in the future. Counsel, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, like, sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, counsel. This brings us to the first opportunity for citizens' public comment for items that are not on your agenda. If you'd like to address counsel, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and we'll have three minutes for you to make comments. Anyone in house? Seeing no one in house, and again, nobody virtually this evening. We will go ahead and move on to ordinances, resolutions, motions, and public hearings. Item 8A and 8B are a closed-record hearing and a motion to approve a preliminary plat, plat 00, excuse me, 011-2024 for Red Mountain Industrial. Since this is a closed-record hearing, I'll ask City Attorney Jessica Foltz to read through the hearing guidelines, and then we'll hear from our planner, Alicia Ransom, for their staff report. So Jessica.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A public body's decision on a quasi-judicial matter must be based on and supported by the record in that matter. In this instance, that consists of all testimony or comment presented at the public hearing, which was presented to the Planning Commission, and all documents or exhibits that have been submitted in connection with the new matter being considered, with the matter being considered, excuse me. Only parties of record will be allowed to provide comments and no new information or documentation can be introduced. The purpose of this hearing is for the city council to consider the pertinent facts, applicable law, and to make a final decision on the Red Mountain Industrial III preliminary plat file number plat-011-2024. The appearance of fairness doctrine applies to this hearing. That document requires this hearing be fair in form, substance, and appearance. It must not only be fair, it also must appear to be fair. For that reason, I would like to ask a few coun- council questions. First, has any member of the council engaged in communication with opponents or proponents regarding this issue outside of the public hearing process?
No.
No.
Will any member of the council obtain any financial benefit or suffer a financial loss as a result of the outcome of this hearing?
No.
No.
Is there any member of the council who believes that he or she cannot hear and consider this application in a fair and objective manner?
No.
No.
Is there any member of the public, either proponent or opponent of this matter, who objects to the participation of any of the council members in hearing this matter? I do not see any indication in the audience. Do we see anyone virtually? Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Appreciate it. Alicia, staff report, please.
Thank you, and good evening. The staff report for the Red Mountain Industrial Preliminary Plat starts in your packet on page 51, if you'd like to refer to that. The applicant is PVS Engineering and Environmental, and the parcel is owned and will be developed by Frank Teigs LLC. The property is 35.96 acres. There is a vicinity map in the packet on page 63, and that's the parcel in question. Well, it's two tracks. They are to the west of the Keene and Paradise Way intersection. It's that new section of road that's just been finished as part of the Red Mountain Multi-Use Phase One plat, and that continues through. The, the project will be developed in three phases, and there will be 14 industrial lots. The, the application materials are located in Attachment 1 of the staff report, and that starts on page 79. That includes all the things that were provided by the applicant, and that's a CEPA checklist addendum. Couple of things that I'd like to highlight, CEPA checklist addendum, and then several reports that they submitted, a revision of their TIA geotechnical report, and that includes the additional work that will be done for this project, and a critical areas report. That's of significance because the, the critical areas report found that the habitat areas that were designated on the Priority Habitat Species Map by the Department of Fish and Wildlife, that, what they found was it wasn't pristine shrub step, which is what is required to do any kind of mitigation or additional reports on that area. So that's not required as part of the conditions of approval. The project is subject to review under the State Environmental Policy Act, and they submitted an addendum to the previously prepared CEPA checklist as part of file number CEPA-024-2021. The, the city issued a revised mitigated determination of non-significance on September 18th of 2024. That's included in your packet on page 578. We received several comments from reviewing agencies, and that includes Benton Clean Air Authority. They provided their standard comment about soil destabilization and proof of contact that they'll, the developer will need to provide prior to doing any groundwork. Also, we received a comment from Washington State Department of Transportation, reminding us that the project is in proximity to the SR224 Van Geesen Improvement Project, and that they recommend that we, the city, collect impact fees to defray any transportation costs incurred by the development. The, we also received several no-comment comments, which is pretty standard, from Benton REA, Kennewick Irrigation District, and Columbia Irrigation District. The full comments that we received for the CEPA are included in Attachment 4. The public notice was sent out to the property owners within 600 feet on September 18th of 2024. We received no written comments from the public, and there were no written, there were no verbal comments given at the public hearing that was held in front of the Planning Commission, besides the comments from the applicant. The agent, we did receive a couple agency comments. Again, comment from Benton Clean Air Authority and a comment from KID stating that they had no comment. The proposed preliminary plat is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The, the, this area is designated industrial on the comprehensive plan map. It's located next to high, high-intensity commercial, high-density residential and medium residential, medium-density residential. And one thing that came up with the Planning Commission that may be of interest to the city council is that the development will require proper screening between the residential and industrial uses. If you look on the preliminary plat map, there, to the north of Lot 28, there are three lots that they're residential and made directly, but the industrial lots, the municipal code requires specifically a six-foot block wall, which is in place, and a buffer of landscaping at least 10 feet in width, and it has to be, include evergreen, an evergreen portion that there's always some kind of screening involved with that. They, that will be installed at the time of building permits. It'll be the responsibility of the owner, the future owner of Lot 28. The application is consistent with the goals of the comprehensive plan, and that includes plan-adequate commercial and industrial land use to provide a sufficient tax base to support city services and facilities. That's Land Use Policy 17, and the proposed development is consistent with the requirements for the industrial comp plan designation. The zoning, the product, the property is zoned light industrial, and the lots meet all area and dimension requirements, and that includes a 10,000-square-foot minimum lot size for industrial lots. The Planning Commission held a open record hearing on October 10th and voted to recommend to council that they approve the, that you approve the preliminary plat. Additionally, staff recommends that city council accept the recommendation from Planning Commission and approve the preliminary plat as presented.
Thank you, Alicia. With that, I'll ask if there are any parties of record here who would like to comment on this item this evening. If you are here, please raise your hand. I see no one in house and still nobody virtually. Is that correct, Stephanie?
Correct, yes.
Motion to approve file number plat 001, excuse me, 011-2024 Red Mountain Industrial III preliminary plat. Counsel, do I have a motion, please?
I move to approve preliminary plat number PLAT 011-2024 Red Mountain Industrial III based upon the findings of fact, conclusions of law, and conditions of approval, and as recommended by the Planning Commission.
Second.
Motion is second. Counsel, do you have any questions that weren't previously addressed by Alicia this evening? Counsel member Bloom?
Abutting, this, this property abuts the former railroad right-of-way. Is that still owned by the city, or is that?
Yes.
Is there plans to address that? I mean, I, it, it, we've sold off the, the frontage on Van Geesen, correct?
Roscoe? Yeah, there's seven acres that, that's part along the raceway and two acres on the other side. But then there's 14 acres that goes past that. So part of this development, they'll be building Paradise out to the west and then get into that corridor and then head northwest.
So that would, that, that would be a future road corridor. That's, that's what.
Yeah, there's some, there's some sections that we don't own of it, but we, in the mid nineties, they, they bought every other section through there.
Anyone else? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like, sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Alicia. Appreciate it. Okay, we're going to go ahead and move on to item 8C as a public hearing on the 2025-2026 preliminary biennial budget. And with that, I'll ask Aaron Gwynn, our finance director, to present our staff report this evening. Aaron?
All right. Thank you, Mayor Gary. Tonight's public hearing is the first of two for the 25-26 biennial budget. The 25-26 proposed biennial budget is a collaborative effort that began in early spring with the establishment of the strategic focus areas. Departments spent the spring of this year preparing detailed budget requests that were submitted to the Finance Department in early July and were compiled into the 25-26 requested budget. In mid-August, the senior leadership team began regular meetings to discuss the requested budget and strategies for balancing it into the 25-26 mayor's proposed budget, which was presented to council on October 29th. The mayor's proposed budget is available on the city's website at the link in the presentation. I'll email these presentations out to council after the meeting tonight. There have been no changes to the details within the budget since council received it on October 29th, and council has had it for a week for review. The only question I have received was about the makeup of general fund revenue. So this evening, I put together a few slides to hopefully help explain general fund revenue a little bit more detail. The primary funding source for general fund is taxes, with one of those being property tax. This slide shows the history of property tax collection since 2020, with the projection through 2030. The average change from 2017, so our actual numbers that we had 2017 through 2023, has been an increase of 4.64% year-over-year. This budget is conservative and projects a 3.85% increase out through 2030. It varies a little bit, but the average is 3.85. Sales tax is another major tax revenue source in the general fund. Since the peak in 2021, you can see the city has had a decline in sales tax revenue. The long-term outlook does not look like the trend will continue, and we are forecasting a 1.5% year-over-year increase. So the third major tax revenue in the general fund is utility taxes. The city imposes tax on utilities at the following rates. Water and sewer are each 12.5% to the general fund, 1% to the street fund. Stormwater, electricity, gas, telephone, and cable are all 6%, and solid waste is 8.5%. This slide looks at the history and the projection of all the utility taxes for 25-26 proposed budget. Utility taxes are estimated to be $5,166,795. And this slide, I think, is the one that Bloom was looking for. This slide shows the proportion of each revenue source in the general fund. Taxes make up about 68% of the revenue, with utility tax at 25, property tax at 24%, and sales tax at 19%. So this is the 25-26 proposed budget. It is approved at the fund level. All the detail we just went over, as well as the information in the handout from last Tuesday, is the detailed plan for spending. But ultimately, this will be what council adopts. The 25-26 proposed budget has expenditures totaling $109,816,794, with an estimated ending fund balance of $23,362,664, for a total budget of $133,179,458. The appropriations are balanced with resources of estimated beginning fund balance of $38,533,535, and revenues of $94,645,923, again totaling $133,179,458. There is no action following this evening's public hearing. In two weeks, on November 19th, we will have a second public hearing on the budget, and council will have the option to adopt after that. Also, on the 19th, we'll have an update for the financial management policies and personnel policies, as well as a public hearing setting property tax for 2025.
Thank you, Aaron. Much appreciated. So with that, I'll open the public hearing at 6:23. If you would like to address counsel on this budget, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. We'll give you three minutes for comments. Anybody in house? Seeing no one in house, and still, nobody virtually, and we'll go ahead and close the public hearing at 6:23. And as Aaron mentioned, there's, this is just the public hearing. There's no motion this evening. So counsel, do you have any more questions of Aaron in regards to her presentation this evening? And we'll start with council member Bloom.
Warren, thank you for addressing my issue of the income. One, one additional chart that would be nice is to show those, the relative budget, city budgets year by year, as, as you have with the projections. I mean, so the bar charts that you have out there. You know, one, one thing that would question people is our property tax is limited to 1%, yet we get 3, 3.5, 4%. Clarify, that's because of growth. And, and.
That is correct. I'll have a.
What I was trying to, to tie is growth means we have more expenses to, to address that growth. So balancing that out, that, you know, it's, if we have no growth, it'll be 1% increase in property tax. Thank you.
Counsel member Fettow?
Thank you, sir. Aaron, I meant to ask you when we met, was it yesterday? Day is all blur. So projections for sales tax are to grow at 1.5%. Have you done any preliminary analysis on impact of Benton REA's new facility after 2026, when they're projected to open, and what that might do to sales tax?
I have not. I've heard that it will increase, but I don't have specific numbers.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none? We'll go ahead and move on to item 8D. There's an ordinance amending the 2023-2024 biennial budget. And again, Aaron, your staff report this evening, please.
Great, thank you again. So this evening, I'm presenting the 13th Budget Amendment of the 23-24 Biennial Budget. This budget amendment contains items in two separate funds. The first items are in 355 Transportation Improvement Fund. This amendment recognizes $138,258 in revenue from Costco Wholesale, which represents traffic impact fees to be used to modify the intersections at Kennedy and Bombing Range and Kennedy and Keene. This amendment increases the ending fund balance of the fund by the same amount. Next item is in the 441 Water System Development Fund for the second Intertie Booster Station with City of Richland. This amendment recognizes $85,000 from Frank Teigs LLC, which will pay for the land in the interlocal agreement with City of Richland for water modeling. This amendment also appropriates the $50,000 for the costs associated with the interlocal agreement with City of Richland for the water modeling. Staff recommends passing the attached ordinance. This amendment authorizes an increase in the 23-24 appropriations in the amount of $50,000 and an increase in total resources in the amount of $223,258, bringing the revised budget to a total of $148,853,359.
Thank you, Aaron. Is there anyone from the audience who would like to speak to this agenda item this evening? Seeing no one in house, still no one virtually. Counsel, do I have a motion, please?
I move to pass ordinance 23-24 amending the City of West Richland 2023-2024 Biennial Budget.
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions of Aaron in regards to this item? Counsel member Bloom?
Really minor. It was my understanding that the Costco negotiation hadn't been finalized. Is there a risk of us accepting the funds?
Costco, do you want to comment on that?
So in, in the mitigation agreement with Costco, it's got a clause in there, if they abandon the development and can't come to terms with DNR, we'll simply refund their $138,000.
So we would just have another budget amendment if we took it back out?
Oh, they'll get it done, I hope. All right. Any other question? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, like, sign. Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. We do not have any unfinished business this evening or new business, so this is the opportunity for citizen public comment for a second time this evening. If you'd like to address counsel, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Quiet bunch this evening. And again, nobody virtually. So with that, we will go ahead and move on to staff or council reports, announcements. Staff, got anything for us this evening? Mr. Slade? I beat you to it.
I don't know if I'm going to steal the mayor's thunder. Are you going to talk about the legislative tours that we did last Tuesday? Okay.
You were the, you were the director, you know? You was the head of the bus. It was a short bus, too.
Yeah, so every year, we do a legislative tour where we invite our representatives from the 8th District and the 16th. Even though the boundaries keep getting changed on the map, now West Richland's split in half between the two. Previously, we were all the 16th, and previous to that, we were all in the 8th. We just tell them, we don't care, we like you, so we're going to meet with you. But we take the opportunity, not just to have our handout to our senators and local representatives, we show them projects that we've got, but we show them what's going on with development and successes we've had with past projects. So we did that last Thursday. We had Representative Connor, Representative Barnard from the 8th District. We had Senator Dozier and Representative Clicker from the 16th District. We spent about three hours with them. Eric put together a PowerPoint presentation, and they were simply amazed, blown away what a little city of 18,000 can do as far as all the mixed-use development that they're seeing out at the heights of Red Mountain with the row houses. row houses, townhouses, apartments, single family, love the park out there. They've got out there at the heights. So it went very well, and we took the opportunity to give them an update on the SR two two four Red Mountain project that we're still on schedule and set to go get under construction June of next year. Took the opportunity to tell them about the Keene Road widening project, and if they have a spare eleven million dollars in their budget, that we would gladly spend it. We talked about how the city's doing, using its own money to do the design and environmental and right of way. So they're impressed with that, so that when they do fund it, we're moving dirt right away. They're not, it won't get tied up with some kind of right of way or environmental issue. The other things we talked about is possible future expansion of the wastewater treatment plant, and then showed them some of the wells, the projects that we got on. So overall, I think it was very well received. We even took the police chief with us, too, so he had some things to update them on the used car lot down there from the Metro Drug Task Force thing. So it went very well. Did I miss anything, Mayor?
The the amount of work that the staff does and all the city employees, with only eighty five employees, they were they were throwing blown away by what we do with very little, you know, staff. So they also were appreciative of us taking the time to put together the PowerPoint and the tour. And they said they don't get that from any of their other cities that are in their their areas in which they represent, which is is quite odd. But, you know, if we we got we got six individuals that we want to keep happy, and so we keep them, make sure that they get to see everything they need to see, and they understand what what our needs are. And so we we get a lot of we get a lot of love from them in Olympia when we go over there and and make contact with them. So, yeah, it was it was very, very, very well received. And also make mention that Senator Cantwell's representative, Rick, met with Roscoe and I, and and gave an update on the well project that Senator Cantwell was responsible for, the two million dollars for to for that well project. And he's also requested a quarterly meeting with us. So we'll see Senator Cantwell staffers coming to sit down with us. And there'll be asking for some other projects region wide for Senator Cantwell to to champion in her. She she chairs, I believe, the Transportation Committee in DC. So it's great to have both Senator Murray and Senator Cantwell from our backyard, because we get a lot of support with them, and they bring the funds to us to do what we need to do here in eastern Washington. So we're very, very thankful for that. I think that about covers it.
Okay. And one other item, utility committee members, check your email. I'm going to be sending out some dates to set up meetings. We've got a statement of qualifications for Belmont Reservoir Project. So we'll be reviewing some SOQs to decide who we want to select to do the design of that reservoir. That's that two million gallon reservoir that we're going to do right there on top of the hill, right at Belmont where the road ends. And so look for email on that. The the SOQs were due today, so I think we'll get them out next week. And then set a time to review and score and decide if we want to do follow up interviews in first two weeks of December. The other SOQ that went out that will be coming, I think it's next week or the following, maybe it's the nineteenth, is on our Well Twelve R. So this is another domestic well to get a consultant to do the design for drilling a well. And Well Twelve R is the one at the Raceway with that acre and a half we bought back from Benton RA right there at the end of Cooper Way north of that substation. So we'll be moving forward that. So unfortunately, utility committee, you won't have a holiday break. We'll have a bunch coming in in December in between the Thanksgiving and and Christmas holidays, so that we can hit the ground running in January with those projects. There's also SOQs that are going out for a facility plan for the treatment plan expansion that will be coming out shortly, too, that we'll be doing it right after the first year. So utility committee will be busy, and then a general sewer plan to review shortly, too. So.
Roscoe, I won't let you off the hook yet. As you sent an email out about the restroom closures at parks based on vandalism, then we've got a public setting here. I think it would be a good idea if we made knowledge of what's going on there, and if maybe Commander Coats has any updates in regards to that. I'd appreciate it, the vandalism, not only the grounds, but the facilities itself.
Yeah, so the the restroom facility at Heights at Red Mountain was vandalized. It wasn't just one event. That was the third in like two weeks, where they went in and smashed the partitions, they broke off toilets, they broke off the sinks off the walls. These bathrooms have automatic locks, so they lock in the evening when the parks are closed at dusk to dawn. So this is happening during the day. And after the third time, I mean, they repaired it twice. I'm like, just close it. There's no park reservations right now. So kind of frustrating. These guys don't have a lot of money. We don't have a lot of resources. And to have our newest park treated that way is frustrating. It's not just happening in West Richland. It seems to be, I don't know if there's some dumb TikTok video that that's going on or what, but it it's bad. We had somebody doing donuts in the fields at the back of the sports complex. You know, so just encourage people to pay attention. I mean, somebody posted a video of a car on the playing field with the headlights on. Call the non emergency number. Please don't post it on social media. Doesn't do any good to see that post two weeks later. Call the five oh nine, six two eight, zero three, 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 and report it. If you see something suspicious, somebody in the parks after hours, you know, they'd love to go out there and just say hi, you know. You know, I'd say nine out of ten times, people are not up to it. But that one time, we need to catch them and and, you know, but it's bad. I mean, there's not a lot of resources and to waste it on this. So right now, it's closed. There's nobody using it. We'll we'll take our time getting the repairs done and probably have it open in the spring when the fields reservations start. But it it is frustrating. The back of the sports complex, I'd love to put some kind of I wouldn't say barrier, but stuff that you can't get a car off that back road onto it. But that's part of the deferred maintenance that got cut. So we'll have more discussions on that. So there's a few other items. But in positive note, did you please do good. We we fill out reports, but again, they can't be everywhere. So again, public, you notice something unusual, not normal. People driving out, call, please. Good note is part of the year two hundred thousand that you appropriated for two thousand twenty three, twenty four budget for park improvements, part of the deferred maintenance. One of the big impact ones was getting rid of the pea gravel at the Big Toy at the sports complex. If you haven't been out there, that just opened up. So you've got that new surface turf kind of there, and the staff took the opportunity to add ADA improvements. So they poured some sidewalk around that, so it's now ADA accessible. So they kind of took care of two things with that. And it's open and and getting a lot of positive reviews on that. And love to do more parks with it, but again, that takes money. But everybody's excited that the kids aren't throwing pea gravel anymore at each other, so.
And the only thing that I could think of at the Heights that people might be upset about is maybe the color of the surface of the basketball court there. That that crimson and gray might have a little, you know. All right. Thank you, Roscoe. I appreciate that. And we'll move on to council. We see Councilmember Bloom.
I don't know if where the Corps of Engineers had made a decision to go ahead and proceed with the removal of the access to Bateman Island. But in the same note, the parks there at Bateman Island, the City of Richland closed because of the homeless encampment and drug use in in the parks there. So I'm happy to know that we at least have our bathrooms locking at night. Have we considered putting surveillance cameras there, Wi-Fi?
So Commander Coats can correct me, but I've had this discussion with the police chief before. So I can put cameras on the outside of the bathroom, and that bathroom can be fine, and I could have one person go in there the whole night, going in, and the only person that comes out in the bathroom gets destroyed, but you can't prosecute that because you didn't actually see him doing it.
Possibly put a cameras that would detect damage that wouldn't invade privacy. So I I just.
But we'll talk offline. I don't I don't know, but we do have video cameras, but like I said, you can't prosecute unless you see them actively doing it. The locks prevent a lot of it, but our biggest thing that's been successful is people calling in when they see people. When it's dark, shouldn't be in the parks. You're usually up to no good.
What?
Yeah.
Can't remember that as a teenager. But to that to that note, the removal of the access to Bateman, I've reviewed the documentation for what the Corps presented, and not all that happy. I I would hope that the city, I hope to the City of Kennewick and Pasco that their water supply stays clean, because there's a lot of sludge that will be dumped from sixty years of that causeway being in place. So a lot of stuff came down the Agma River over those years. And but their their comment was, they're not dredging, they're just letting it move. I'm going, yeah, the river will do that. So anyway, we'll see how that goes. I would I would appreciate possibly attending the meeting they have with Senator Cantwell's staff, because I'd like to broach the issue of why we can't run a BFT bus out to Hanford.
We can, I can go ahead and give you, I can give you Rick's contact information, and you can go ahead and reach out to him. Sure, absolutely.
As as we, it's a Department of Transportation absurdity. Anyway, all right. Thank you.
Councilmember Fettle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to remind everybody, Saturday is the twenty fifth anniversary, twenty fifth annual Tri-Cities Veterans Day Parade. Ben Geese will be closed from about nine o'clock until one. Invite everybody out to come out and see the parade. So far, we've got over one hundred entrants. We expect this as the Tri-Cities, everything happens last minute, so we expect probably another twenty five to thirty in the last couple of days. Keeping on the regional theme, this year, since we are a regional parade, we've reached out to our regional leaders. So Senator Banky is going to be participating. Councilmember Commissioner Alvarez and Commissioner Delvin will be there as well. Grand Marshall tomorrow is the Chamber Luncheon at the Flat Top Flex, and our Grand Marshall will be speaking. Master Chief retired Dodd Coats, he's a Navy SEAL, thirty tier SEAL, went to Vietnam and then Afghanistan. That's the duration of his tour. Great man, lives in Benton City. So come tomorrow, Flat Top Flex, twelve o'clock. Meet Master Chief Dodd Coats. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Moran?
Thank you very much. I'm wondering, at the BF COG meeting, it was mentioned that on the thirtieth of October, Representative, Senator, Representative Banky?
Senator.
Senator. Senator Banky was going to be presenting AI in government. I don't know if anybody from the city attended. But I I don't know if folks had heard of that happening, and then also the congressional connections on the thirty first. I don't know if we attended. If we didn't hear about that, I am more than happy to make sure to send that information if it hasn't been getting to the city staff, so that folks can know to go to that. So please let me know if that hasn't been received, and I'll forward that information from now on.
We get all of that, too.
Perfect. I I thought you would, but wanted to make sure. I also, Happy Veterans Day. Of course, we've got the parade, and then the eleventh, this coming Monday, is the celebrated Veterans Day. So all the veterans out there, like a lot of us on council here, thank you for being veterans. Thank you for serving your country. And finally, on the fifteenth, which is next Friday, is the Benton Franklin Council of Governments Board Meeting. It is again hybrid, so starting at ten AM at the Benton Franklin Council of Governments office and also online. You can check on the website to get that link. So that's all I got. Thanks. Sorry, one more thing. I don't know, just in case, if you've been hiding under a rock or something, but you might not be aware of this. Today is Election Day. So if you have not put in your ballot in the ballot box, and that is about the only way that you'll be able to get your ballot counted today, it is the only way to get your ballot counted at this point, please do so. I encourage you all to vote however you feel you need to vote, and do so by eight PM, dropping them off in the ballot box.
Mayor Pro Tem Brink, floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just two things I'd like to mention. Next week, I will be in Tampa, Florida, attending the National League of Cities City Summit as AWC's Vice President. AWC is, of course, covering my travel. There's no cost to the city. But it does give me the opportunity to interact with more than a thousand of my peers from across the nation. So I'm looking forward to that event next week. And second, I would just like to show my appreciation for being able to take part in the legislative tour that took place last week. As the Mayor Pro Tem, I had the opportunity to talk with our representatives and senator that was present. And I, too, was impressed by the work that our city has done, all eighty five employees working together to create the city that we were able to showcase for our legislators. They were impressed. They were actually overwhelmed in many areas with regard to the development, the eye appeal that the city has, and the basic high standard of living and high quality of life that we all enjoy. So I was glad to be a part of that. And I just want to thank all of our city employees for the hard work you've done to put together such a great community for our citizens. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Brink. Much appreciated. And Eric would call that curb appeal. Without no curb, you have no appeal, right? All right. Real good. Well, it's time to go home and see what's on the tube this evening. So with that, we will go ahead and adjourn our meeting at six forty seven. Thank you, council.